Okay, everybody could stand, I'll lead. The pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America. To the public with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pretty good. Lee.
Liz, when you have time, could you do roll call please?
Rice, here. Davin.
Present.
MacArthur.
Here.
McAvinci.
Ready.
Olson is absent with notice. Palchon.
Present.
Okay, also in your packet tonight is the minutes from our last meeting, September 4th. Pardon?
The agenda.
Trying to run it.
They do this when they do that youth assembly meeting, I do it every, every single time.
All right. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as written.
So move, support.
Okay. Now we go to, in your packet is the minutes.
Do we have a vote? You gotta vote.
Yeah, I thought we did, you said they had a second and I, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. One opposed. All right, now we're gonna keep going here. September 4th, 2018, minutes for approval. Rick, did you find anything interesting?
No, I didn't. Nope.
I mean that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Anybody in the public have any comments? Nobody in the public?
Just Sue.
Well, she was part of our meeting, correct?
Sue.
Okay. Chairperson. It looks like we're getting close to seeing the light at the end of the tunnel on this master plan. I believe probably by the end of this year, when the master plans, I'm gonna retire. So, we need to see if we can get a new chairperson. I have issues of hearing and time for me to relax and enjoy myself, so.
Well, you deserve it, Lee, you put a lot of effort in this commission.
Well, thank you very much.
I think we should get you one of those horns.
Well, they do have a unit, I guess you put out there and you put these wireless buzz in your ear, but, you know, my son, "Oh, that won't work."
You ask Ron Allen how it works.
Yeah.
He sits every night watching TV with a headset on, it's wireless. Of course, which is good, because it blocks out candy, you can't hear anything else.
Well, I do have Sennheiser.
I wasn't getting that.
When I'm home watching TV, I do have Sennheiser Wireless, but, you know, that's connected to the TV where this here is basically like a wireless microphone that you put in the middle of the table. But, I do have a lot of issues hearing, so it makes it difficult also.
Yeah.
So how long you been on this board, planning commission?
I can't remember. Does anybody have record of it? I know it was in the 90s.
Really?
Oh yeah.
I could get you an answer, just not right this second, but I could.
No, we're just curious.
You were here when Larry and I showed up, you were chairman when Larry and I showed up in 2007.
It might be the 80s, it seemed to me. It's been a long time.
We appreciate it.
All right. That's about all I have to say, and any of the fellow commissioners have anything they'd like to add?
I would, I am very interested in getting somebody else on commission to replace the seat. I would love to see if we could get Melanie to come before the council and kind of talk a little bit about what she's done and why she's passionate and why she would like to continue. I think that would be a good thing. We have put it out to other members of the public and, you know, I know Melanie's done a great job and I would love to see her continue to do that. So I'm wondering if that would be something that we could do.
Absolutely.
We could do?
We. And. We, I believe to support her is very important. I mean, it would be nice to see everybody there and everybody can have their three minutes to speak about, if they are passionate enough and would like to have that conversation about Melanie doing it, I think that would be nice.
Had a village come to me.
At the next meeting? You know, it'd be nice to have a full board for the planning.
What's the date on that meeting? I know, I think there was a calendar here or whatever.
Question, yes, it is November 13.
22nd, I believe.
Is it 22nd? Yes. It is, the 22nd, 7 p.m. So just a thought.
So there's been nobody else?
Well.
What's that?
The only, I don't know about apply, there was some talk of Charlie Cration wanting to come back. He's been off for about, what, a year, a year and a half?
You said he wanted to come back?
He did.
To you?
Say he was interested in it.
Well, don't forget, November, there will also be opportunity to.
Really? I talked with him a lot, he never mentioned it. Wouldn't you talk to him about that?
Someplace, I saw him twice in the last month and a half or so, one of those two places. I don't remember.
But as far as we, but as far as officially, nobody has applied.
Right.
An offer of positions.
But can we, can we make a motion for that when it gets down to open? Line 10 there?
If you'd like to make a motion to recommend her.
We're gonna be discussing that.
I would, I would wonder whether it would make, it's just like we were questioning, you know, with the timing of the election and all that stuff, would it be better maybe to wait until after we see what the new council makeup is before we put something like that in front of them?
Yeah, well, we have a new president.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there could be some changes in the composition of the council and that could affect, you know, how Melanie's input received and that, so it was just about that.
Right.
Nice, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll talk to Charlie also, I, to give us lots again. Because I didn't realize, I know Tuesday sort of conflicted, because he used to do a lot of the roadwork, like Tuesday through Thursday, but maybe, maybe that's changed.
Maybe.
All right, I'll, I'll get with him also. Anything else?
Well, any more, anything from you, Rick?
Vicen. I would like to put together recommendations for our village park land over here. Evaluate the idea of a wildlife preservation park and compare that with what the other input we have from the master planning process and from the previous master plan and the previous, the village and township recreation master plan and compare those with what we have now from the decision made April last year. And just have that ready for a meeting in November, I think. I'd like to do that as a project for us, actually. With approval of the planning commission.
I think that's a good idea, I think we should also, as part of that, also try to get some kind of idea of how surrounding communities, what natural preserves are in the surrounding area and see what sort of amenities and types of trails or features or things they put inside of those areas too. Like, do they have signs describing the unique habitat that's in those areas or benches or other types of things like that?
Yes, yes, and yes, they do.
So it'd be nice to collect that input too, so we could say, hey, this is what's going on in other nearby ones.
As well as, as the various state wildlife areas, there's state recreation areas and there's state wildlife management areas. As far as I can tell, there's no state, in Michigan, there's no state wildlife preservation areas or habitat preservation areas. I've only found three in the entire country, actually. But anyway, that's what I wanna work on, if it's all right with you guys.
Okay, sounds good, Rick.
I'd like to help on that.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Okay. I would just like to say that I, I keep hearing good things about our DPW, I think that they're doing a really good job in the village and I just wanna mention them because they are a critical part of supporting the infrastructure in the community and providing for our events, things like that, getting the barricades out, picking them up afterwards, keeping the area, you know, neat and clean for everybody, so I just wanted to pass on my appreciation of the DPW crew and the work they do.
I do have one thing, Lee, I forgot.
Sure.
The, I seen in the fire that the Historical Society is doing a, sending out a letter requesting information from people of what they would like to see with the mill, with the historical things around that, and is that something that would be useful to us when they get the results back? And hit them up for that? I see Judy Prey right away and I can ask her to get a copy of it.
So, do you, do you have correspondence with the Historical Society and that?
Other than just getting the, you know, occasionally they'll call and ask for certain things, you know, for the mill or whatever, but then we get copies of minutes and stuff of their meeting and trustee Sliva updates us now at council meetings, two every month.
Okay.
Because that was in their newsletter that they send out for members, and I see that in there, so it might be interesting for us.
Seems like I've seen that, or maybe you met, somebody might have forwarded an email on that.
No, it was in the newsletters all I know.
Okay. All right, we'll move on.
We did talk about the blacksmith shop at one time, I did send some things out and ask for some feedback on that, so.
Okay, we'll move on. New business? No new business? Unfinished business? Open commissioner seat? We brought up Melanie, right? And possibly Charlie Cration, I'll get with him. And I guess I can contact Melanie about the 21st meeting, or do you think we ought to wait till after the election?
Well, there will still be additional seats to fill out too.
Right, no, I understand.
There's probably three seats, so.
Okay.
In the council?
No, here.
Could be.
21st, right?
It's 22nd.
22nd of meeting this?
Yes.
Okay. Would I get to 21st, okay. All right.
So are you guys gonna recommend somebody to them as a motion here, or?
Well, you know, we could recommend Melanie, but I think she needs to go in front of the village council first, right?
I think more importantly, I think that before we recommend anybody, we probably should consult with them and make sure that that's, that they're willing to do that, because I, I know Melanie left with kind of a negative impression about how she was treated at that meeting and her appointment and stuff, so I'm not really sure how she feels about coming back or not, and it might be better to talk with her first.
Then it, it won't work good to try to do it in the October meeting then, because nobody will know if they do or don't.
That's why I was wondering if it might be better to, to wait until after and.
So, would you want me to contact Melvin, or?
Because then it's gonna be different, and Charlie too, as well, I mean, see.
I'll get ahold of her also.
I'd kind of like to have our app together, if we're gonna get up and speak on whether or not she is, or he is, or somebody else does, or.
Yeah, and I wouldn't wanna, you know, make it seem like we're trying to pressure somebody to do something if they're not comfortable with it either. But we certainly should try to encourage anybody that, that might be interested to at least get their official, you know, sign up with the village officially, say, "Yeah, I'm interested," and let them know that way. Because it's kind of hard to say, "Hey, we recommend this person" when they haven't even asked to do it, so.
Okay, so I'll, I'll contact Mel and maybe I'll get with you guys, maybe I'll have a conversation with her, maybe you guys can follow up the phone calls with her also.
Can we tell the village council that we'll have a slate of potential members at their November meeting, or? So we can just, so the council knows.
That we're.
We're putting something together, do they need to know that, or?
It'd be nice, they asked the last time, so it'd be good to tell them that nobody's, nobody's replied, but you guys are out recruiting people.
Yeah, we might want to think about how we, we put that to them, I might say that beyond the public notice, which has not seemed to have brought much results, we are also going to, I don't know, try to actively see if we can recruit some people that might be interested in it and maybe also encourage the council to also, if they know people, we can share that information too.
Well, they asked at the last meeting, was planning commission pursuing, and I said, "Yes," obviously you've been, so it's, that's already been addressed.
So we can give an update that, yeah, not only are we pursuing it, but since we haven't gotten much result on the public side, we're also gonna try to reach out and actively recruit among people that we know, and if the council has any suggestions, please pass them on to us.
Did you get any response at all from the public notice?
Nothing.
Not even a question?
Not even a question.
Want to make a motion and get seconded, something that we're looking into?
I'm surprised.
They were already told that at the last meeting.
Is this something we need to motion, or?
Nope.
This is as long as they know, they asked.
They specifically asked and I said, "Yes," they are actively looking.
Perfect, so then you can, you can fill them in on our status then?
That you continue to actively look.
Pretty simple.
Okay. Then we'll move on, nothing else on that, we'll move on to master plan. Updated plan news, I guess I'll turn it over to you, young lady.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so what you have in front of you are the, I mean, everything that you did so far, this package that says goals and objectives. Those are basically the finished draft, goals and objectives, future land use, and on page. Okay, we flip through all that, we get to the mobility plan, that was, there were just a few corrections in that.
Kind of the future land use?
Yes, yeah, in the.
Oh, the goals and objectives, I thought you said future use.
Yes, goals and objectives, then future land use, if you're right, then mobility plan.
Seen that.
Those are all separate.
Oh, okay, okay. And at the back of the mobility plan, the biggest thing was that you wanted the map broken out, and with the help of Bill, who was kind enough to provide a really great, actually, draft here where he broke up, no, it really was. Not only did he break out existing and future, but he also told me which ones were on one side of the street versus the two sides of the street. Exactly, so.
That's not your first rodeo.
Pretty useful information, so. So that was redone, so that's, so the focus tonight, unless anybody sees anything glaring, is the implementation section.
You have a question, it was in, I don't recall which one of the piles it was in, but it's in regards to gateways.
That would be in the.
I don't know if you can look at it, but I just, I thought at one point we talked about the multiple gateways, the three different gateways into the village. Using Church Street and.
Yes.
There's not, Church Street is, its borders on downtown, but here's gateway that'd be coming in on South Street and Bell Street.
Well, actually, I, I was thinking about that too, but when I was reading back through, if you read the definition of gateway, it talks specifically about the entrance ways into the village from M15, so.
I know, but my question back when, to what a gateway was, entrance was so that it was a little more, a different use for all that property of the entire gateway, so like a beauty salon could go in a gateway area, but a beauty salon couldn't go on Church Street. Am I right, or is that, am I thinking incorrect?
I think gateway allows more uses than what's in R1 or R2.
Correct.
See, Church Street's like R2.
And I'm not sure it should be a gateway to have those kind of things, but I just thought that that was a discussion.
Typically, a gateway business is something that would be, doesn't generate a lot of traffic. If you looked at it, it would be something that keeps the residential, for lack of a better term, kind of, you know, ambiance or whatever, so it wouldn't be a, you know, you wouldn't put a bar there or, you know, a drive-through restaurant or something like that.
But the way, the way it is here with it being y'all residential then, like a beauty salon could not go in there.
They could, they could go in and apply for a zoning of a lot and do it, I guess, Bob, but no.
I know that, but I, okay, no, I just.
It wouldn't be a permitted use.
It just stuck in my mind back when I asked the definition of a gateway, and that was part of it, and I thought Church Street was discussed and then it didn't show it as a gateway on the map.
And I think Church Street was, wasn't, didn't you guys talk more about wayfinding with Church Street instead of?
Yeah, more of them.
There was a lot of.
Wayfinding and not.
But I'm not real sure.
Two different ways of talking gateway.
You want those things on that.
Gateway, gateway district versus a gateway arch or something, you know?
Right, and under community image, those are still there in the objectives, the four that you hadn't listed out the last time. So, and that would be under objectives. Which has all the red, well, yeah, okay.
Mine's black, mine's black, but I have it in red.
Page three.
Page three? Foster image, historical community.
Yeah, exactly. Improve the visibility of downtown.
Improve visibility of downtown entrance from Ridge Hall, Bell Street, and Ortonville Road, South Ortonville Road and South Street. Oakwood, you got Oakwood Road and Church Street, and, I don't know what the other "and" is for.
Ortonville Road and Oakwood Road.
Number D. No, I was just, I was more concerned about the zoning, I know discussed about the signage and having signage out there to come down Church Street, but I was just.
I, I remember the talk about whether that should also maybe potentially be considered gateway zoning too.
Yeah, and I don't, and I could not remember which word.
I think that we discussed it, but I don't remember if we really had decided to make that or not.
Not that I recall.
I don't think so.
Unless it was, you know.
I don't remember that at all, all I remember is we were talking about.
I remember it was, it was mentioned as a possibility, but I don't think we reached a decision to do or not do it.
I just remember we talked about directing people into the village from Oakwood Road and M15.
Yeah, but zoning has a lot to do with permitted uses too.
Yeah, what was, talking about, you see where Oakwood is? In Church Street? Like, if you're coming from, the normal way into the village would be down Church Street into town.
Yes, yes.
And that's what Bob was.
Okay, so you're thinking maybe something along in here?
No, no, my, my, I was just, I thought.
Oh, okay.
Early on, we talked about it and, and it didn't show up on the map, and I just was curious, I don't know what's best or not best there at this point, but I.
But it is mentioned in.
Right, I think as Liz said, it was specifically wayfinding as an unturned, so people don't feel they have to go all the way around versus being an actual gateway.
Yeah, because there was two separate topics we talked about.
So not necessarily, we're just saying signage gateway.
Yeah, but we're just, we're not interested of having any, the real small commercial on Church Street then.
Correct.
I'm good.
We are not.
Now, I know these goals and objectives, you've updated them quite a few times, so.
Right. Yep, that, plus the future land use, which I think you, you didn't even have a comment on the last time.
I, I think it was pretty much in alignment with the other, but I think they added, did they add in, or was that in the mobility plan, that's probably, yeah, mobility plan's where they added, added some great stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, the only thing, it looks like I might have messed up this, on this mobility plan, that little, you guys got that little leg completed between Sherman Court and East Ridge, right?
The walking path?
Yeah, the walking. Walking trailer.
Yeah.
So we should probably change that to.
Oh, instead of future?
Future. Yeah, go, actually, yeah, it actually goes up East Ridge Drive, it goes up East Ridge Drive and ties into Sherman Court.
So that would turn into what, the blue?
Blue, it should be like blue between East Ridge and Sherman Court.
Well, it's really neither, I mean, you could say, is it both sides of the street or neither, it goes between two streets.
Well, it's a single, it's not a double sidewalk on both sides, so I would say if it's a single one, then I would probably make it blue as the closest color, without adding another item onto the.
Just that section.
Right.
Just that little itty-bitty leg.
Yeah, this piece right here.
It ain't a divided highway.
No, but it's not on any street.
Yeah.
What's this little miniature, oh. What's this little miniature circle here where Curly Creek Car House is, South Street, just by A&W?
The pink?
Intersection.
Intersection and traffic calming improvements.
Is there an intersection there?
Well, that's traffic calming improvements, I think those are sized based upon the relative.
Priority.
Priority by size, but it's, it's not, it's just right on where, like where the bank here entrances or Willow Point.
Yeah, if what you're saying is it should be closer to Varsity Drive.
Was that the intention of that, oh, okay. I thought, because it's on Curly Creek and I don't.
I'm thinking that's probably.
That's where the walking path is right now already.
I'm thinking that's where, that's where.
Crosswalk there.
Oh, like cross.
Yeah, and that's where that already is, is right there at the.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
There's a crosswalk there.
It's north of the.
We're talking at the.
Um, at the bank, to crossover to Varsity, you know, across South Street.
Yeah, that's where, this is the little thing.
There's a crosswalk there, that's where that little.
It's just north of the end of, or, right in that area.
You would think they would have brought that.
So it is right.
I don't see how it is, but, dang, it's not, it's not at Varsity Drive, it's north of.
At the crosswalk though.
It is north of Varsity.
The crosswalk is not where this died.
Crosswalk's right here, at the corner on.
What do you think of another one?
Well, the very corner property is A&W, the crosswalk is between Willow Point and A&W, which is showing where it's at, it's right where it's.
It's close.
The one thing I know.
It's not, but it is.
Okay, okay, I follow that, okay, I understand you now.
Tomato tomorrow.
Exactly, crosswalk.
Crosswalk.
That's right here.
I'm just saying, it should be, if it's gonna be on a, aggravated, it should be south of the creek, not north of the creek, because it's not north of the creek. I was confused what its purpose was. Okay, never mind.
Okay, what about, I know that there had in past plans. Okay, what about, I, I know that there had in past plans before you became on, uh, manager, there was a talk about connecting through the village property from the end of Narren Street into Narren Park on Oakwood, and I don't see that connector over there. I see instead something that.
Yeah, you're saying Oakwood Road?
Narren Road?
And Boss Road, um. So you wanna add, you wanna extend, you wanna extend that gold line straight?
Well, I know there was talk that because we have village property there, we could have a connector path that would not go on private property, that would stay completely on village property, cross the creek and break into Narren Park.
Or cover.
This area right here, Larry?
To the park, it makes it to Beekys.
No.
No, we could go here, through this village property, cross there to the park. Yeah, and that was in the previous plan that John Lyons had put together.
And you wanted to put another one here too, right?
John put the one to Beekys.
I wasn't, yeah, well, John, he, John also, we attacked when, when John was out about going across there and Narren Park.
So you guys wanna add, add those?
Oh, yeah.
She's scribbling, it's kinda close, it's kinda close enough, right?
Yeah, do you have it? Okay.
I think, I think we should add those because I think that it would be really handy to have a better connection to Narren Park.
Yeah, because that was what you talked about.
Right now, there's no walking connectivity to it.
You're saying this area, you're saying this area right here?
Yeah, we can connect through the village property to Narren Park this way, and they were also saying you could also go this way to Beekys.
Because there's a trail that comes.
But I thought, yeah, they talked that the people in this house right here said that you could have the trail go through.
This one's ours, right?
This would be west of the river, which would let you go to Beekys or cross the bridge and go into park.
Yeah, we can cross the bridge and go into park and stay completely on village property if we, if we go right here.
Very rich area, is it?
No, no.
You'd have.
You need to build one.
A future, you're saying a future.
Yeah, we're talking about a future after here to.
What's that?
No, no, I, according to this, is this the White House?
Oliver's Land, right?
Or is that the White House?
Yeah, but they basically said.
This is the White House with a pond on it, and then next to Beekys.
Yeah, they said you, they could run a trail on that west side of the lot to make a connection.
Because White House is the last house in the village.
Right, and then Beekys is on the other side of Grove.
You can stay on village property by coming here of going across.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it just looks so small.
And then that, that long skinny one that's next to the White House, that's ours, that's 255, and then the other one is that.
Put a bridge, huh? Bridge over River Quay?
Yeah.
So were they, were they looking at?
The other one.
We own, do we own this parcel right here?
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
But we were talking about getting to Beekys, like through this line here?
Both of them, I thought it was like the long one.
I didn't know.
We own that kinda big L-shaped one right there.
And the long one.
And then the long one.
Where, where did Oliver say that you could cut across?
Right here.
Right there in the back was property.
Right along here?
It'll come out at the V of Beekys.
Oliver's right here.
Right, so we gotta get an easement.
Here's the pond right here, right?
Except blue dot.
That thing there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, you're right, it was this way then, huh?
Okay, so that, we, we are, that, that's the line that, that we're looking back, okay.
Yeah, that's the Beekys line, and then the other line through the L-shaped lot is the one I wanna go to.
And this is the bridge, this is a future here.
Bob would come out where Beekys is at the corner, where that hair salon, like up there, is where the Beekys one would come out.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, by the shopping.
Yeah, it would come out.
Not way down at Beek, or, yeah.
No, it should come out like kind of on the curb there, where, where you'd wanna talk to Beekys and say, could you run, could you run like from Pet Supply Plus, uh, trying to get my bearing straight, because it faces this way, the east in their parking lot, talk them into this.
Are you saying you're coming into the L of Beekys?
Right, that back space between the two buildings?
Where, where they had soap in there?
That was the idea, um, from the former.
Which would be, like you say, would be probably dead straight across there.
Correct, which was the other thought, is just straight on and, and, you know, away from the traffic and the cars, and you're coming in from the back of the building, they're safe.
And it's a lot shorter.
You know, those things.
And you're getting that many people off of the Oakwood Road.
Yeah, and I know, I know lots of people that might walk, they're currently on M-15 or take bikes on M-15, it would be really a lot safer if they had a, uh, different route to take.
Well, I think too, then it gets more, more people. I mean, I would walk, if I could get that way.
Absolutely.
To get my couple miles in, I'd walk to Beekys or the pharmacy.
Right.
If I could do that, if I could cut across, and that's better yet going across Oliver's property. I mean, I think there'd be a lot of folks in the village that would use it just as a, a walking and, and be able to do shopping where it's, it's in Groveland, but.
And they were, they were in a graveyard, so we just have to take it to the next stop and.
So we, we just need to update the map and add those two connectors, one to Beekys, one to Narren Park, plus the L-shaped property, and then we should be good.
I kinda scribbled on it.
Okay.
And then you can have that, and then I scribbled or bracketed that one that's done.
So are we into the mobility plan then?
Yeah.
Are you doing it directly?
That's what you just did.
That's what this is? Yeah, that's what this was.
Yeah.
You only had some.
Well, by the way, I notice, I noticed in the mobility plan, just, uh, one thing is I noticed it starts at number one, two, three, four, five, six, and then it starts over with number one again on the page number?
Yeah, that's because it's been done in sections, and so when it's all put together, we will have to, yeah, we'll give it to our graphic artist and format person, and she'll put it all together.
So what I, if we're into comments on those, I, I did notice that for pedestrian bicycle travel, and this is on page, I guess, two of the second portion of the mobility plan, like the second section in it, um, while there's a recommendation of this plan that five-foot wide sidewalks be provided along all roads in the village, is, um, is five-foot wide now the standard? Because I, you know, I mean, that's, that would be significantly wider than existing sidewalks through much of the, the village, and I'm not sure how well that will be received in like, say, the more residential areas.
Okay, and what, which page is that?
Two.
Page two of the second section, yeah, the second page.
But that's for you and a bicycle traffic.
Yeah, I mean, I know in the past we've talked about four-foot wide sidewalks throughout the village, and now it says five-foot wide, and I was wondering why, is there some new recommendations from the state or whatever that says sidewalks should be five-foot wide as opposed to three-foot or four-foot? Because, like you said, in a resident, in a more residential area, you have a five-foot wide sidewalk, it's a pretty wide sidewalk.
But technically, you're supposed to be riding a bike out of sidewalks for people to walk, technically. A bike trail is not the sidewalk.
But there's the non-motorized pathway combines both, and that's what they're talking about.
And I didn't know, because I, I know in the, I think many of our sidewalks are what, some of them are, like, many of them are three-foot wide, and then we got four-foot wide.
Forty-two, is it forty-two inches, thirty-eight to forty-two inches, something like that? Because I remember going through the traffic when we talked about the broom width was, couldn't be any more than, I thought it was either thirty-eight or forty-two inches.
Yeah.
Because it was, if you had any bigger than that, you couldn't get it down a sidewalk into.
Three foot six, you're saying.
So, they're probably thirty-six, a lot of them, a lot of the sidewalks, some of them may be forty-two, but.
Yeah, so that's, I, I know, some of them are three foot, some of them are four foot, and now this says they recommend a five foot, that would, that would almost require replacing all the sidewalk, or most of the sidewalks, except for maybe just right in the downtown area. So I was wondering why it was five foot as a recommendation?
That was in here.
Was that in the previous master?
Yeah, that was in the previous plan, so, um, would you wanna take out the five foot and just say sidewalks along roads?
Well, I mean, I think we need to specify an appropriate width, because I know that we said in some, in many cases, especially if you have somebody in a wheelchair or something, three foot may not be adequate for a sidewalk. So I know we had in the past, when I was on council back in the earlier 2000s, we said, hey, you know, we should try to make them all consistent at four foot. But I don't know, do you have any, um, knowledge about any recommendations on widths?
It's five foot as well?
I think there's all.
I mean, it's, it's the recommendation, it doesn't mean that's what we're doing.
Well, I mean, we, we can change it if we, I'm just thinking five foot seems awful wide, and it's not in, in, in alignment with where most of our sidewalks are now. I think three foot's maybe not wide enough, but I wonder if five foot might be too wide for many of the residential streets when it's, you know, impacting somebody's front yard or.
But are you talking new ones put in? You're talking, it doesn't matter about current, these are the, are improvements.
Yeah, but as our existing sidewalks need replacement, we would replace them with, in alignment with this plan, which means we take out a three-foot sidewalk, put a five-foot sidewalk, according to this. I'm wondering if five foot is too wide or if, or not. That's why I'm asking the question.
Does this save all sidewalks, or?
It says.
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation of this plan that five-foot wide sidewalks be provided along all roads in the village. And then they talk about minimum, bicycles should have minimum width of, uh, non-motorized pathways accommodate pedestrian and bicycle should have a minimum width of six feet.
Right.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And that kinda makes sense.
Yeah, um.
But I'm wondering if we can change that to four foot instead of five foot, and, and that might be a little more appropriate for some of the residential streets.
Is that four foot down by the, by the creek where the wood bridge is?
The new one?
I think that's at least four foot.
It's gotta be here, really close to four feet wide.
What's the new one that we just put in? That's four foot?
Which one?
Uh, over at Ball, is that what you're talking about? Ball at the new bridge on the creek?
No, no, this is at the, south by the, or the middle school, or the, EFIS used to be, right there where that wood bridge is. I know there's some wider sidewalks there.
I think this is dictated by the state mobility laws, isn't it?
Well, I'm gonna check the, yeah.
Are you gonna check that? Because, because the undot standard, you know, in order to get grants, you gotta, you gotta build to their standards, and if they're standing state that, that's.
I'm sorry, I don't see that as limiting, it's a, it's a recommendation. It's what you could put in that fits your space. We would like as large as possible, who wants to keep rebuilding, or to put, you know, safety bikes, and you're just, you're not gonna keep going wide, you're going to go within this limit. I don't think it's limiting those.
And, and just an observation here, I don't know why they are, you know, um, only whole foot widths. I don't know what that's based on, do you see?
Oh, but.
As opposed to four and a half feet, six and a half feet, five and a half feet, five and a third feet?
Yeah.
I don't know.
No, I don't.
I don't know. Is there any scientific basis for that?
I don't know that there's scientific basis, probably more of a practical safety basis, but as far as going to inches versus feet, no, I honestly, that one I don't know.
Okay. So you're gonna find out where that's.
I will find out what the, what the standard is and if this comes to work, although I'm sure they have one, you know, but, yeah.
And I, I can think of like the long Mill Street, south side of Mill Street where they put sidewalks, and which are relatively newer, but if they were to make those five foot and stuff, I think they're currently about three foot, they would have to add a lot of fill just to be able to expand them.
Approximately two feet.
Yeah, because there's My, My Yard slopes like this from that point, Johnson's got it similar, uh, so they'd have to put a lot of fill in there on those properties just to be able to accommodate a wider side.
Well, see, in those cases.
Our engineers determine.
In those cases, what you would probably wind up doing, it would be cheaper almost to.
A retaining, a little retaining wall or something?
To widen the road and put a, or, you know, just think of it in theory, if you wanted to eliminate the parking spaces on Mill Street all the way down to about, what is it?
Turn the shoulder into the side.
And turn the shoulder into, not a sidewalk, but a bike lane, bike pedestrian lane. See, like you had on that one section of Cedar, the, from Cedar to Ball Inn, they put that bike lane. That's considered a pedestrian path, pedestrian bike lane pathway, whatever. If you went out and measured that, it's probably six foot wide, you know? So it, it, you don't necessarily to have a path structure through the village, you don't have to have all sidewalks. It can be a, a shared, a shared lane, you know, now they wouldn't do that like on Oakwood because it's too busy of a road, but on a twenty-five mile an hour city street, you could rather than tear up your sidewalk, you could put a bike lane or a mobility lane in because it'd be a hell of a lot easier.
On the street.
Yeah, because you're running gutter, it's gonna cost you, what's it, thirty dollars a foot probably for gutter or something like that. Now, I can't remember, but, you know, you could run a hell of a lot of gutter in the road for tearing up sidewalk and pouring concrete.
Okay, I, I guess the best thing is we just need to validate what are the current recommendations from the state and, uh, federal regarding sidewalks and minimum widths and things like that, and then, well, we probably need to review those before. I, I think we need to have that information before we can, you know, do a final, say on that, what widths are appropriate in the approach. I, I'm just thinking five foot seems awful wide for some, some of the streets where we have a sidewalk.
And here's another question.
Okay.
Lee, you mentioned, um, it may not be legal to ride a bike on the sidewalk. Do we have any kind of ordinance that says you can't ride a bike on the sidewalk?
No, I, I don't know if we have that ordinance.
I don't either. Anybody know?
But technically, a bike path in a pedestrian walkway or technically, you go in the city, you're supposed to be driving a bike on the sidewalk, you're supposed to be driving a, a bike path.
Right, this is a small village, so I just wanna know if that's actually.
I forget where I was at yesterday, they had a bike lane right along the road, and they just take part of the lane and mark it as a bike path.
And sometimes it's, some places it's a, a shared thing, so that if there's a bike using it, then it's for the bike, but if there's no bikes on it, then the cars can drive down it, same spot, really.
Okay, okay, so I will check into that, and then, um, um, I will go ahead and send the completed draft of the master plan. I guess we could send that out to everybody, because there isn't another planning commission meeting before the joint, the election and then the joint meeting?
There's a, a planning commission meeting on the, um, the day after the election, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Day after the election.
The only mention of bicycles in the ordinance refers to parking of your bicycle.
Typically, that's a motor, motor vehicle.
So that's the.
Michigan Motor Vehicle.
November thirteenth meeting you're talking about.
Bikes are treated in that way.
In which case, that's a joint meeting, so.
You originally had the list there.
You don't have to have a local ordinance for bikes to stay off a sidewalk, it's under Michigan code.
Uh, November thirteenth, joint village council planning commission DDA workshop, right?
Right, right, so the final could still be reviewed by everybody.
She wants to know, can, can she distribute the information to, at this time, correct? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, no, no, I was just, you know, with, with some of the things that you're talking about now, of course, I'll send something out, um, the twelve, which is what this says. And then the next meeting is the joint village council planning commission DDA workshop that we have on our schedule.
We should have another planning committee.
There should be another planning committee, maybe?
They have.
Is that with them or?
That's on the seventh of November, it's planning committee.
That's just a regular meeting.
Right, yeah. I, I would highly recommend having that meeting and have them there, so you can kinda finalize your story for the joint meeting, wouldn't that make sense, or?
Have who there? Village Council?
No, no, you got this group meet on the seventh.
Right.
And finalize this before, if there's any last minute mistakes or anything like that you wanna have cleaned up before. And finalize this before, if there's any last minute mistakes or anything like that you want to have cleaned up before.
Can't have it.
Thirteenth.
Or maybe just.
Thirteenth of the, we're talking, right, is a.
And then pass those on to the council prior to the meeting so that we can.
Talking about the seventh for a regular meeting of the planning commission and then the thirteenth with the.
Joy's meeting.
Correct.
And I think you're right. You're supposed to be.
One week after the election.
They were supposed to get in.
Following June.
Right, so they have, they wanna have a regular meeting on the seventh.
They were getting at the meeting?
And then the joint meeting on the thirteenth.
That was the workshop. That's not necessarily, yeah.
Their timeline is distributed October.
Yeah, we can't have it the Tuesday before.
I know, what did you say?
Then they said, well, we have other.
So they gotta do it on Wednesday.
For the workshop.
The seventh.
And Bill was saying, put any last minute tweaks on it. I'm saying, or at least collect our thoughts on it and rather than have another revision to that point, just collect our thought, take on it then and share that and then as, as part of the collective input prior to going to the workshop. I don't think that at that point, you know, if we try to make more changes at the November seventh meeting, it's gonna be like really short order. Try to get all that distributed before thirteen. So it'd be better just for us to maybe make some.
I think we talked about that, so that's why we just said.
Yeah, as Bill said, plan over our talking points, find out any things that we think are sticking points and collect that. So that going in the workshop, we have a set of predefined things that we already know we wanna look at, together with the council and DDA. And maybe they can.
That's what we talked about last time. We said, yeah, we haven't talked about that. We got what's.
And so you just asked about distributing the draft master plan before the election or after?
It'll be before.
Well, we'd have it completed to you before the election.
And then distribute it to.
Okay.
For the November thirteenth meeting.
Yeah, their timeline says October twelfth for distribution of the.
Distribution of who?
But I see what you're saying, yeah.
Actually, distribution of who?
Well, it would've been the plant, if we need a planning commission.
Not out to the.
Right.
So agencies and, um, municipalities and anybody else?
No, no, no. No.
That's the, just on the floor.
No.
All right.
That was, what I got was the purpose of the workshop was to have everybody come together at the same time for that next, kinda like the final, final, final draft, yeah.
So, so I suppose what we could do is if it's distributed to planning commission members to review prior to our November meeting on October twelfth, then on a November meeting, we can look over and collect our talking points and then make a recommendation or motion to share that to the other bodies at that meeting. Along with any other comments we wanna add. Is that, is that what you're?
At which meeting now are you saying?
November seventh.
Yeah, right now, it's gonna, the, the draft of the master plan will be distributed October twelfth to the planning commission. We have a planning commission meeting on November seventh. At that point, if we review that and come up with any talking points for the workshop, then we could make a motion to distribute the draft and our proposed talking points to the council and DDA at our November seventh meeting. So they will have it from that point to be able to review it prior to the workshop.
Excellent idea.
Okay.
Got to get your dates right. I'm not even sure. Okay, good idea.
Okay, now this meeting on the thirteenth is seven P M., right?
It's supposed to be. Last I heard, that's what I got.
I know you sent something out. I didn't wanna look on.
I don't remember. I made the motion, but I don't remember.
I think we said seven.
Don't worry, she's got it.
It's seven P M.
Okay.
And it's next door, right?
That is correct. We're doing it at the Old Town Hall.
Good. Awesome. It's a big works.
The heat works.
Okay, page. And by the way, I think on, like on the sidewalks, when we talk about bicycles on sidewalks, in page three of the second section, they talk about shared roadway and I think that's appropriate for most of the roads within our village limits, which are twenty-five miles or less, neighborhood type streets. And then they would just, the bikes would share the lanes with the cars in those situations. So we don't really necessarily have to accommodate bikes on sidewalks within the village limits if we adopt a shared roadway strategy. Is that correct though?
I believe so.
Okay.
And, uh, the, what I was gonna tell Rick about the, the, uh, issue of bikes not being an ordinance in the village, being on the sidewalk, that's under, uncandered, handled under Michigan vehicular codes. And the reason I know that is because I was sitting at McDonald's in LaPierre and all of a sudden I happened to pull in and I'm sitting there and it was backed up all the way to the street. Literally, there are people backed up into the street waiting to go into McDonald's. And this guy come riding lickety-tute and literally not paying attention to what he's doing, hit the side of my car, rolled over the hood, onto the dirt, and he's laying there like, like this, and I'm sitting there going, oh shit, I thought I was in trouble 'cause I blocked the sidewalk, you know? And police come up, said, no, he's not supposed to be on the sidewalk. He's supposed to be riding his bike on the road. So you had the right of way. He shouldn't, he shouldn't hit your car.
So if some pedestrian hit your car in that situation?
It may be a different story.
Might have been.
That's right.
Hit your car, wasn't watching, went right over the.
I felt really bad about that guy doing that until I actually got out and looked at my car. I know he was down in Fender and I asked.
Okay, back to, are, are we?
So was there?
Finished on the.
Think you're done.
Mobility.
Finished on mobility or?
I have a couple of brief comments on that still. On the, page four of that second section. Talking about connected, automated vehicles. Uh, on the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, the last sentence, connected and automated vehicle technologies. It ends with aging riders will be increasingly dependent others to fulfill their mobility needs. Should have on others.
Probably supposed to be on.
Yep. I picked that up and I just thought I would mention that.
Okay.
On the next page, page five, on, uh, under the opportunities for improvement, Mill M fifteen area. And it says, consider the construction of a passing or bypass lane and/or a left turn lane in this area. There are left turn lanes currently in existence on, uh, all four directions at Mill Street and M fifteen. So I was little, I, I was wondering, is that just a carryover from the last one that maybe has changed since the last master plan?
Yeah, probably is then.
Yeah, now it might make more sense to say a right turn lane because the going northbound, there's no right turn lane. And then cars that bypass Narren Forkoff.
Yeah, that's weird.
Have a Narren Forkoff and go up to Mill.
Southbound, there is one.
Yeah, 'cause there's a right turn lane going southbound, but no right turn lane going northbound.
There's a power pole there. That's why they didn't do it.
That might be too, but.
There's a, I, seems to me the, like.
But at the same time, we're also talking about it Narren Street about, uh, you know, uh, closing Narren and construction of cul-de-sacs. So if you do that, then all the traffic will be forced to turn in Mill and there's no right turn lane there.
Well, maybe they figure the normal path if you're gonna go, if you're gonna be in, if you had a right turn lane going into Ortonville at Mill Street. Okay, if you're coming north, you'd get off, uh, South Street or that little cul-de-sac jog over. I don't go up to the light if I'm gonna go into town. I take that little diagonal.
No, but that's one of the recommendations here is turn that in, you know, blocking that Narren Street.
Ah, I thought we discussed that last meeting and said get rid of it.
Yeah, so that's still in here though.
So the construction of a passing, that number, that first bulleted one?
The, well.
First and second.
No, the second. The second one, we already have left turn lane. So if it's gonna make a recommendation of a turn lane, it would make more sense to be a recommendation for a right turn lane. And we also talked about eliminating, you know, that we wouldn't.
Blocking off that.
Blocking off Narren Street.
Narren M fifteen.
So you want that eliminated, right?
So done.
Number two.
I think, that's the meeting we were hearing.
Yep.
We scribbled it out.
And I, and I, like I said, the first bullet point, I wasn't quite sure it made sense because it, you know, we already have.
But you're saying it should be right turn lane here too.
Yeah, we already have left turn lane, so.
Change that to right turn.
Yep.
What else you got, Larry?
Um. We already talked about the connector from the end of Narren Street, so.
You saw, you got another one?
No, that was, I, I, that we, that had been noted previously when we were back.
We have no witnesses by the way though.
I got it on tape.
No, you don't.
That's, that's, that's what I had, uh, made note of to ask about in my preview of the materials prior to the meeting, so that's all I have.
I wanna go back to the sidewalks for a minute. What are we gonna get a recommendation on the one for the sidewalks throughout the village? Or for different, uh, dedicated pathways, bike lane or for different areas in the village? Or are we just looking at one width and showing it like it is in here just where there'll all be five foot wide in the village?
I think she's checking to see the theory behind why it was five foot.
Right.
If they can in fact reduce that.
And we're not gonna have any different widths on?
Well, they, we currently, I think currently in other parts of the plan, they talk about like different types of, of pathways or, or bike trails having different widths.
Or separate corretways.
So I think it would probably be prudent to take a look and say, what are the recommendations for the sidewalks, for bike paths, for combined paths and all those things? And see what the, what the actual state level recommendations are.
So like, like the perfect example.
Right, so that's gonna be.
Right.
Is like the, like your, like your street, Schoolhouse, it's such a low traveled type area that the bikes, you've got a sidewalk there for pedestrians. The bikes can share the roadway there, you know, and you don't really need a.
Lot more bikes lately.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you have the only real road.
And then the question is what's, what's inappropriate with course sidewalk?
Yeah, I just wanted, just to make sure that that was the.
Well, in glancing as we're talking, it's ADA compliant with a five foot, as I'm researching information as we're going over.
So that might be why.
That's why. And that's what it's showing with undot.
Yeah, and I know, I know that one of the things when we came to talk about trails is that when you talk about putting in a quote unquote trail and it has to be ADA compliant in order to get credit money and all that stuff, we don't want to do that in our nature preserver. Have a ten foot wide ADA, ADA compliant trail through there. And that's why I think that we need to, we need to think about that and make sure we have flexibility in, um, in, in what we put in the master plan. Cause I don't wanna be locked down, say everything has to be ADA compliant. Cause I mean, funding is important, but in some, in some cases, you know, if it's, if it's, I, I don't want to do something that's not appropriate for the village just to be able to make it ADA compliant so we can look for, for grants and funding. You know, if we have to go without the grants because we, it doesn't fit with being ADA for a particular piece of property or situation, then we'll feel it on our own somehow, you know?
Okay, so we're gonna have her dig into that and then we'll get that back to us, Larry.
I think the important thing about ADA compliancy is not funding its ADA compliancy to attract people into our community.
Right.
We have a lot of people that are of all different statuses that would love to have a space to walk in.
Absolutely, and I'm all for that, but it's, it's, it's not appropriate in every situation within our village. Like I said, the village park area that we have is probably not, ADA compliant probably would not be a good fit within that piece of property. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, is he reading this complete streets, Larry? Federal Highway Administration Guidance Two Thousand states that the walking and the bicycling facilities may be incorporated into and maintain or into some transportation projects. So what they're saying is this would be new. Whenever you do something new, you have to incorporate either walkways or bicycle paths into that plan.
Newer update.
Okay, is that it, Larry?
That's, that's it for me.
Okay.
This part.
Anybody else have any other items? If not, we'll move on to the next item. No, okay.
Okay.
So we got it. Alright, so we covered, did we get future land UCF?
Yep. I think we did that already. There was no.
Last time, yes, right.
So everything there is good?
You got anything for me?
No.
Okay.
It's basically what we had before.
And I think we had that at our last meeting.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so that's on the mobility. Anything else we have to cover?
Uh, this one.
So.
Implementation.
Implementation.
Right, that's the big one for tonight, actually. So implementation. And the biggest thing in there, of course, obviously if you have questions on the text too, or changes to the text, that's fine. But, um, the biggest thing is the chart in the implementation section. There are actions and then there are priorities with timeframes. And the chart is divided into four sections. There's planning and zoning. These are all, they should all be actions. Planning and zoning, civic improvements, economic development, and circulation. And hopefully, did everybody get colored copies of this?
Yeah.
Before we go into it, what's a V M and an M S and a P O? I think I got a P C.
Oh, planning commission, uh, let's see.
They're at the, on the last page, they have the.
They do, they have.
They have the abbreviations.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Village manager, V M, village council.
I got it, I can read it. Thanks.
Yep. Okay, and what I'm gonna do is give everybody an extra copy of this. One you can keep, one will collect, if that's okay. If you have any super important, you know, changes, scribbles to it, that would be great.
Thank you.
This is the one I didn't get much time to review.
Okay.
You got one?
I have one from a packet, so I won't need to scroll.
Now, can I ask a question upfront?
Yes.
You mentioned this is our big one to do. I noticed that all of the newer items, and I think most of these items are things that were collected during the, um, information gathering phases. And I remember we reviewed these different things that had marked.
They're gonna look very familiar.
And so it looks like they have just been collected up into this implementation.
That's exactly right. What I did was I went through all the new, um, objectives that you've already gone through.
Okay.
And pulled out the action ones. You know, if it said in our plan, we will, you know, or we envision, I, I didn't put that in here. This is, um, these are simply the action items. I also in some instances broke them out a little bit because there were some potential projects that, like the, uh, gazebo for heritage garden and bandstand by Old Mill were actually all one objective originally, um, for that area. And I broke those out because obviously you don't, you know, there are many different timeframes for that, for example.
Okay.
So, um, so that would be important to, does anything, you know, look like it shouldn't be in here? Should it be broken?
Well, I was wondering, cause I mean, the, other than the color code, the existing ones that were there before all have priorities and timelines and.
Yes, and.
Associate with them. And then the, the new ones seem like those are just blank. Does that mean that we have to kind of?
Yes, cause I wasn't sure, um, I'm, I'm relying on you and the village council actually to decide which ones are gonna be, they're better off being priorities or not. And if you're really unsure, cause obviously there's civic improvements, that is a whole new section, um, with a lot of recreational activities in there. And you may, you know, might not be sure at all. It should be in here as something that you would like to do because it's in your objectives and it was expressed by the public. But if you wanted to put a five year timeline on it, you know, um, and of course, the things in here depend on whether or not you can get funding. I mean, stuff doesn't happen if you don't get funding and that's not anybody's fault necessarily, so, um.
Well, they just happen a lot slower, cause if we have a good capital improvement plan, we might still be able to do a few of these.
Mm-hmm. Which actually, which actually, um, made me think, do you have an adopted parks and recreation plan so that you can apply for grants with the D N R?
We do, yes.
Okay, okay. Cause that needs to be updated every five years, so that.
Okay, we're just about done for, it's about done.
Okay. Ooh, twenty nineteen.
So, and that. So, and that was in here under planning and zoning.
And one of those shovel. That's a shovel.
That's one left over from the last time. It says update or adopt and update parks and recreation plan every five years. So that's why I had that question mark, um, is to, you know? Because, uh, let's see, I believe it expires in December of the year, but it's about five years after.
Parks and Recreation Master Plan was adopted in February of 2015, so it'll be 2020 before this is due.
And you'll want to start something before then? You'll want to start something in 2019?
Yeah.
Because the process takes at least three or four months.
And that one was joint with Brandon Township.
You said fifteen, that was?
February.
We're, we're going into nineteen.
Right, so like this next, this coming year?
So probably once master plan is done, which should be all done, definitely we should be done as soon as possible, it's by mid of next year. We can start working on that one.
By mid of next year?
Well, we'll be done sooner than that according to timeline. But there might be some, some other topics that might come up.
Is this, um, what we're going to use for the joint project?
Yes.
Um, can I recommend that the difference between the B and the C, the blue, is just a little different? It's really close. I know it says C, but the ones that are blank, you can't necessarily tell them, they're really close. All the other colors are really distinguishable.
Yes.
Fill the ball.
No, just the color difference between a B and a C.
Right.
If it doesn't have a color, number on it, you can't, letter on it, you can't tell because they're so close in color.
Yeah, the shading is.
Everything else is gray.
That's, that's true.
Just a little layer, please.
Yes. Do you want to make the B a little bit more of a teal-y color so the color is different?
Well, the greens are really obvious.
Right.
And some of these, you know, I mean, I just, yeah, I mean, it's really, all I was concerned about honestly was getting the, um, actions in here. And the, you know? And the other thing I tried to do was not duplicate because this is basically leading toward a capital improvements program. You don't need duplicated, um, actions for this. So if something was expressed in circulation as well as community image, I just put it in one section. Yes, exactly, yeah. So if you see duplications, then that shouldn't be there. So the ones that don't have who recommended it, what does that mean?
What do you mean?
The, like, on the first page, the second one, and then the develop solutions, those don't have who recommended that from the village. Do we know or?
Where, where, what do you mean?
Or you mean responsibility? It doesn't say who it is on there, there's no, those two are blank.
You mean? Yeah, because that's a new one?
That's who's responsible for it.
It's going to be eventually responsible. Right. Okay.
Any, anything that's a new one? The, the ones that already have stuff in there was existing.
I took it as that was who recommended in their, in, we put it together.
Right.
Because you have business owners, you have. Right, yeah, this is, this is like the next, the next step. If you wanted to go back to that, we can still make. No, I was working backwards, okay. That makes sense. But, yeah, but if, you know, if for your recommendation you needed that, I can send you that original objective, goals and objectives thing that had all that in there.
I assume you've color coded them in the B or C colors or the one, twos, threes based upon probably your impression of, of the assessment and where they would belong?
Yes, just kind of.
Because like I said, is it, they don't say B or three or A and one, but the colors are the same.
Right, and I just, I wasn't, right, I wasn't sure.
So it's just, so basically you're looking for us to say, hey, this is, anything that doesn't have explicit numbers in there, this is stuff that we, you need just to, hey, validate this is the right place for it. If it is, we can make that firm and put the numbers on it.
Right, I mean, I wouldn't really have any ideas to where, you know, you might want to be at with that, like build a bandstand by Old Mill. That's in B timeframe, three years, but maybe you're really, you know, more comfortable or it's more realistic to put it under four. Is this making it better or worse? We asked everybody's input for the DDA, the village, and the planning commission to give us their priorities. We now have new priorities. Is it an option to create another priorities questionnaire with these and then we know the answers to these? Because how do we know the answers if we don't simply set out a survey and everybody picks their numbers and you know exactly where they fall? Like what you did before. Right.
Can I ask a dumb question? Maybe would that be a good exercise like we went through before? Would that be good to kind of leave them open? And then when you have your joint meeting on the 13th, use that as an exercise to kind of bring everybody together, you know?
As a format for getting this done.
Right.
Again, I have another question. On the planning and zoning, it says adopt and update parks and recreation plan every five years. Isn't that, and you got it attributed to the village council, isn't that a planning commission thing to do? Especially the update parks and recreation plan every five years?
Yeah, that's true.
I can see adopt maybe by the village council.
Oh, adopt.
But the update part, it seems like that would be a plan. It's plan. It's a plan, actually.
It actually should maybe be PC slash PC because the planning commission would.
Okay.
Update the plan and then the village council would have to adopt the plan, is that correct?
Well, it's actually, you guys have signed on to the.
The final action would be village council, right?
Right, because the work would be.
Signed on to a joint parks plan, parks and recs plan, so that's.
You're, what you're putting in there is.
But they're on.
The decision portion of it, correct?
Well, if this has responsibility, who does the work?
So should it just say adopt? Because you obviously can't adopt it without the FOU. So maybe at this point, um, you know, with, with those comments, I, I really like the priority survey format actually for. Um, you want to focus on the actual projects in each section and make sure that's, you know, what the added ones in red there? As well as the black ones, make sure that hasn't been done already from the last plan.
Meaning what?
Well, focus on what's actually, you know, the projects that are in here from your goals and objectives.
An example being on the front page, just grab, go down to, what are you going to do to develop solutions to noisy activities in the village?
Right, I mean, maybe there's a different way to word that or you have something specific in mind or you don't really even want.
Shouldn't this be?
I guess my thought is offhand, do the questionnaire, find out where the new ones fall in. And then use that platform of us all getting together to help with solutions for our top priorities. Not what are our top priorities, we should already know that, but then you guide maybe solutions for them. Brainstorming solutions, it's not what it will be, but maybe, I know, I just, it's a question.
No, that's, no, that's.
That is, right, so we send that out.
I, there was a question, not a.
That goes to everybody.
To who?
All three, like we did, the DDA, the council, and then this, this is what we've kind of revamped to being the possible, where do you see these lying or priority list? Then we all know, we bring it all together and then we decide from there how to trust it.
Okay, so we're essentially going to take.
So distribute this, distribute this with some instructions prior to the joint workshop.
Yep.
Yes?
I liked the format of the question survey, did anybody else?
Of the what?
Of the initial questionnaire of your priorities.
Which one?
I'm thinking recreate that, the very first one.
The one that went out to everybody.
Using this though, right?
Oh, I was thinking, these down as the priorities that you already said.
Didn't we already have the priorities and feedback? Do I understand?
No, the red ones are all new.
Right.
We don't know anybody's input on the red ones, only the black ones.
So you just said you'd like some.
Oh, I see.
Format for when we send out questions to.
To the DDA, the planning commission, and the village council. Were all given the black priorities under our goals and objectives and we went through the sheets and we scored numbers as to how we thought they were a priority.
So with this, you're talking about just sending it to each.
Of the three entities again, before the meeting.
Right.
Then we do know what they are out of this. Because we don't know now because we've added, if you look how much red in here, it's more than black. So now we don't know what the priorities are of these between the three entities.
You're just going to send them this so they can indicate it on here?
Well, well, um, I was thinking just put these back into that same questionnaire.
Yeah.
Of the objectives.
Yeah.
And remember where we had numbers and we just went down the list and we decided the numbers? And then we know what our priorities are and then at that joint meeting, we could say, hey, this is our first priority brainstorm, what's a way to solve that? Or, you know, what do we think, or when do we think timeframe wise or whatever? And get an idea.
Should they reformat the black ones too at the same time or?
I think so because now you have to evaluate all of these if they may change your order, wouldn't you? It'll change my order, I think. So yes, you did have, to answer Larry's question, um, you did have a priority survey, um, where some of this stuff was done. And I'm just trying to think of how that was broken into objectives. I could go back and take that. The only thing is that now you've got the old ones mixed in with the new ones. Because the way I view it is the first one was which of these do you think are important? Let's keep them, now let's add some more that we think are important, now what? So now we need to put them all back together again and rebound.
Okay, that was.
Priorities. Yep, nice.
Goals, priority survey, I haven't, we had something back where they had a total priority rank and everything else set up and that was from the July packet, I found it.
I just gave her a copy of the actual survey.
Of the, yes, thank you.
And.
Yeah, okay.
I'll write a copy of that.
Those we handed in to you folks.
We've got our vision statements with our.
So.
I mean, we're going back here.
Right, and it was, what was your vision statement on the back? I think on August 7th, Larry, you got the.
We got that on August 7th, yeah. In our July one, we got a goals priority survey and it had objectives and then a high, uh, medium high, medium, medium low, low, and the total priority rank. A bunch of things, but I think that was the only things that were the pre-existing, right, this is the master plan, is that right?
Not sure if that's true. It may have been added from the original survey and then.
Yeah, there were a few, it looks like a few new things in here, probably from, I'm wondering if those were from the vision statements maybe? But I don't know if they're from that region, so.
So if we, if we got it back, would we be able to readjust this accordingly with?
Right, to make it really useful for a meeting on the 13th with what you're talking about.
Yeah, because that's what's.
Yeah, we want to make sure that that was tallied and made sense and some kind of, you know, before.
So I, I think that if I'm, I'm thinking about the timeframe on things, we had planning commission, DDA, village. We had our list of existing objectives in the previous master plan, said, okay, rank your priority input stuff. But then we also had the, um, oh, an open doors, community involved meeting. And then they came up with a bunch of new topics potentially. But we have not done a priority ranking on those new topics that came from the community input. So I think that is, I, I think I agree with Tony, that's still a missing piece. We need to get that same type of priority saver survey on all the new topics so that we can fit them in with the rest of them also we already surveyed.
Now, how is that any different from taking this and prioritizing this right here?
It's not going to be that different. It's going to be taking this and making. Out deciding what the priority is. Each person has their opinion with.
That's what I'm saying, you just.
Why would the representative like one of these?
Right.
Yeah, or just take this as it is and if you don't like the priority, just change it to something else. And the timeframe and the responsible party.
Well, the only thing is, do you want to, do you want to like, give anybody any, uh, preconceived notions about where it should be based upon? Oh gee, this one's in the blue, yeah, I guess that's okay? Or do you want to have people just be totally object, say, hey, here's a list of all the new things, you ranked previous ones, you ranked these ones the same way?
I was just trying to savor a little time, but.
Yeah, I see your point that. Yeah, because I, I wouldn't want to influence people to put it in certain places just by.
That's definitely what influenced.
So there's a possibility, what, what kind of timeline to get them, get it out, get it back? And then get a new one of these done before the 13th?
Right, because we'd have to do that before actually, um, your next meeting really, to get it out. Because there wouldn't be enough turnaround time after that. So, like as soon as possible.
Time to do anything like that?
Um, I'll go back and ask, I mean, you know, we already got this, that format.
We've got to have some intern student who's a wizard Excel that can whip it out in half hour time.
I mean, now you're talking about doing, eliminating the color and taking the numbers off, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Get some columns and put this here on it.
Columns are already there.
Yeah, but I, well, I mean, you can just do, do like, put these columns, these topics, these columns.
All you have to do is take the color off and the priority and timeframe and people fill the numbers.
Say, okay, is this an A, B, C priority?
Right, and the number, yeah.
The previous way we surveyed was, do you see this as a high, medium, a high, medium, a medium, a medium low, or a low priority? And then people would check their marks where they thought things were. And then we totaled up priority based on, you know, a weighted scale on that.
Okay. So it's a, so we can see in the.
I don't know if you can see it, but this is, um, this is the one from the July packet. Look, that's that one there, from the July packet.
And then give them a timeframe and if you want your input, you'll get it out.
This is all the July packet, where we reviewed all this stuff.
The only problem with that one is it confused.
She has this, right?
Yeah, they should have this format already. All we need to do is plug these into this format and then we could.
Okay.
You kind of got.
The surveys were up there.
What was the day of that?
That one kind of confused people, that, that survey, the way that was constructed. And you only got, the only people that literally turned it back in was the planning commission and I think you had one or two people. Other than that, I mean.
Nobody else did it.
Nobody else did it, you know? To where if you just have this, you know.
We have two documents, eh?
And this is everybody's final chance to give input. If you want to give it, give it, that's great, and if not, then that's okay.
Right.
You had an opportunity to fill it up, you didn't fill it up.
Right.
Got your back covered.
It's our master plan. If nobody else puts their input in. So in this case, we just have priority and we make priority A, B, or C in the timeframe, one year, two, one years out, two years out, three years out?
Does it have to be A, B, or C? We could still have five, it doesn't have to be three.
Yeah, one, one, five.
The priorities. I mean, you could also make it, you know, A, B, C, and it doesn't even necessarily have to be a most pri, most least. You could pick one through five.
Five as high priority, one as low as priority.
And just pick a number in there.
And you put your numbers on them.
Or your letter, sorry, whatever you choose.
I think one through four would be better than one through five, don't you, Larry?
Well, why not just use the way it is on here?
What do you mean?
That's what, right, I was. And you want three of these anyway.
Nine packets a day, come with.
So just.
July.
July, maybe? Well, I got them at Home Save, but I just want to know which packet.
Mine says oh seven seventeen twenty eight.
I don't hand it out to the meeting.
Using this, just take off the colors and numbers distributed.
And then it's so active as a group meeting to say, hey, this is what we're down to. We've all agreed on this, what can we do about it?
How can we prioritize?
Make some moves.
And that way we'll be able to have that and look at this at the same time. And everybody's looking at the same format of the whole works.
And I always had a chance to think about it.
Packets.
Right, and when, right, and when we get the songs.
So do I. Keep your mouth shut.
Electronically.
I know.
Right, get back.
When she sent them, I just go nuts, I go, man, I ain't got all that color at all.
So do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, it would be nice to have the results and everything so that you could see it on the seventh.
Right. True.
And so it's ready to go.
I mean, it won't take long. You're just emailing them out to everybody. It's not depending on a meeting.
Right.
Your priorities is.
I mean, if you just clean that and send it back to me, I can get it out there.
Just having them eliminate the, the colors.
Right, we don't have to wait for each entity to have a meeting and get together.
And just make sure, right, of the directions and that it's clear and people know what you're supposed to be doing.
But I think Bob asked, do we need a motion to do this?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, just general direction.
Part of our discussion here. And do we have a, um, one we will get it and one we need to return it by, so?
Okay, let's see.
Sure, I mean.
I think they'll have to decide when they need it back by.
In order for it to be ready for our next meeting.
So we send it to you, you'll get it out, you've got a list of, okay, so first of next week should be.
Yeah, I mean, as long as the directions are clear and we just pass it forward.
I think the important thing is to make sure when it's back, so you have enough time to work on it and we have enough time to.
Send it out by October eighth then or something, or October eighth?
So, yeah, so.
October eighth is our other meeting.
Yep. Wait.
Well, if I get it to you by the eighth and then you can distribute it that week, whatever works for you.
Might expedite the joint meeting.
We have a, we have a little village council meeting on the 22nd. If I have to, you know, want to make it quicker.
That sounds good. That sounds good if it comes back on the 23rd.
Because I could.
That's fair.
We could badge it.
I mean, you need a good week to fill it out.
Right, but not too much time so that people won't just go, oh, I can do that later.
And we'll have a DDA meeting in between there too that we can kind of push them along.
Nice reminder, that's great.
So you're probably get more out of them, but you will.
Yeah.
Liz, can we get like a 48-hour reminder email? Oh, 48-hour before, like, don't forget it's due in 48 hours.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Where does the DDA?
Countdown clock?
Here.
Because it would not come on a day when it's done on a date last.
What do you call this?
Oh, the council has a meeting on the eighth, okay.
Council.
You said we have a meeting on the eighth, I was like.
No, I'm thinking, don't have it due on the eighth, we've got the procedures.
No, I mean, they can have it due to the village office on the eighth. That doesn't have anything to do with, you know, with our scheduled meeting, so that would be. I was just like, wait, I didn't know I was thirsty.
So if you get it sometime around the eighth or something, you're just gonna send it to us all by email?
Yep. And then we would have to have it returned by what date in order to have?
Twenty-third.
By the twenty-third.
Well, we would need it from you by the 22nd so we can get it to her by the 23rd.
So she should get that back.
But we're gonna remind the council.
Yeah, can we just go one more day?
We're gonna do the 23rd for everybody because then we'll go to the council and say.
On the 23rd.
I've only got, you can put it on your agenda.
Gotcha, okay.
I've only got one back from the council. You got it till tomorrow at five o'clock.
Absolutely perfect.
And we can do the same thing with DDA, saying, hey, we've only got one back.
So then we'll have everything to sue on the 24th?
Correct.
Okay.
And that gives like a week and a half preparation time prior to the November 7th. Okay, or is that, right?
Yeah, that's, that'd be great. Hey, that's nice.
And there's no guessing.
We're having the number six on.
What do you call this right here? I don't know. What do you call this?
That's the implementation section. Term. Those are the charts from the implementation section.
Good charts.
I mean, but in here, at least there's only four in this one. But yeah, I mean, you had quite a bit of input. Between everybody, you know?
Thanks.
That's not a bad.
Rather have that than.
Not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing.
We're all about input.
I really like the.
Whether from us or from other people.
Established, kayak, Ian, can't wait to fish.
The more the better. Product. Plan.
All right.
And I always want with the more, the more.
Here it is.
The more, the more.
Susan?
La mola.
I'm just noticing on the responsibility key, you might want to just eliminate Chamber of Commerce. Okay.
That's true.
Right. We don't have one.
That is correct.
Not anymore.
That's why.
I don't, I didn't see anything in the grid that had.
That's why loads of lemonade in them.
What is the Greenways Initiative? What's on here? Bless you.
It's a county, it's a county thing.
I know. So is it because of funding wise, that's why it's on there? Not that we participate in?
Probably, okay.
Now, how do we help fill in the potential funding parts? Well, I notice a lot of these don't have them even on the existing ones, do they? Sue. In that first stage planning in Zillini where I mentioned before the adopt and upstate parks and recreation planning, we probably. Could you switch around update and then slash and then adopt because the update comes first?
Right.
And we would probably do the update.
Yes.
And then the village council would be the ones to adopt.
Okay, so it would be PC slash PC.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And then it would be update first, then slash adopt, I would think, because that's the order it happens in.
Right.
Okay.
I might suggest one other thing. Because I do see that we had maintain a list of historic sites and corresponding map to document important structures like the Old Mill Museum. Um, and I think with that, we would also want to involve the Historical Society, which is not listed as a current.
Where is the responsibility question?
Anywhere.
Where are you looking?
This new one on the first page.
Planning?
Oh, yes, right.
The second one says maintain a list of historic sites and a corresponding map to document important structures like the Old Mill Museum. Right? And I think that would be something where Historical Society would have a key role on that, but that's not.
They're not a government entity either.
They're private.
They're a private group, so.
They are private, but they can be, I mean, we have property owners as a private group that is involved in some of these. So we could have Historical Society could be, right, included as to be involved.
Residential, other business, other taxpayers, so therefore they're a public group. I guess I'm seeing it, would you do Friends of Amos? Would you do Boy Scouts? Would you do, I mean, you can't go out of the Lions, you have to.
That would be something that.
It'd be a whole different volume that you're adding them.
Brainstormed at that workshop.
Representation in Historical Society? Okay.
Some of the times meetings.
But I think the.
But the fireboard too, and the fireboard is a separate, I mean, we tend the fireboard, we tend the.
It's really important on our part though, if we're doing anything with that to include them, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, is there, I, I, I'm looking at that particular one.
It needs to be on there, but we need you as the planning commission, I don't know where.
I was just thinking, since we're including a whole bunch of different groups and things and then including Main Street and other stuff like that, I thought Historical Society would be appropriate on that one. That's, that's the only reason I mentioned it. If we think it's not needed, that's okay, but I, I just felt that that was an important one to include in that particular topic.
Well, certainly if they are needed to for their input and working on that type of subject.
But so are several others.
The question is whether.
Yeah, but it's the other responsibility. They have project lead, key participant and contributor under the key. So they wouldn't be the project lead, but they definitely, I think, would be a key participant. So that's why I was thinking they might need to be added to the list of responsibility.
Where are you looking now?
I'm looking now at the key chart on the bottom.
Yeah.
So you've got the dark green, the medium green and the light green.
Yeah.
And see, dark green is the project lead.
Key participant or contributor.
They would be like a key participant, just like Main Street is a key participant on many of the things with the building character and stuff like that for the downtown.
But that's because they're a government entity. Like, if you would have to do the Brandon Recreation under everyone that has to do recreation, we'd have to include them.
But see, all of this stuff is not just, not just government entities. We also include property owners, business owners and things like that, so. These are just, you know, key participants.
That's that's our.
That's, looking at the key, I'm looking at the key and the definitions, I'm like, well, it seems appropriate to include Historical Society in that list.
And you should word key participant, I, I have to agree with you.
Well, like I said, where do we draw the line? Because we have to add the town, the recreation, because all of these are rec.
But we got a rec plan that we're going to be doing with them, right?
I think Recreation Department would be Brandon Township.
Responsibility, if the Recreation Department would be, because we work with.
Well, Recreation Department is part of Brandon Township though. It's not an independent entity of its own. It's Brandon Township. We include road commission for Oakland County. Initiative for Greenways Initiative, I mean, Greenways Initiative is listed in there.
For grants. I guess it has to be all or nothing. My concern is adding one, you have to add them all. It's, you know, there's a lot of entities that work with us.
So can you put like a catch-all in there, like property owners slash service groups or something like that, you know?
Well, look, you got, under responsibility, you got village, other government and private. They're definitely private. It's a private club is what it is to our society. And they would be a key contributor, key participant or contributor, but do they have to be listed over here? Or should we just leave a space under here for adding, uh, private groups? It would be key participants or key leaders.
Well, if the only private group listed in this list here is property owners.
It's not their responsibility of the Historical Society.
No, it's not, but.
But this is the, this is the responsibility.
But the, the key code for the responsibility for the color says key participant is the, the medium group. And property owners are not responsible, but they're key participant in many of these supposedly.
What about just an SO of service organizations?
Yep.
Did you just make that?
I did.
I thought I heard something like that. Pack over or something.
So private is Oakland County P E D S, that's a private group. Well, it's under responsibility.
It's Oakland County, it's the government.
Buying and economic development.
See, it's.
Those are all.
Ogo.com.
Okay. Because I, I see that on, like, on another page, GI and OCP are listed in the column for private. So that's confusing there, right?
All right, it shouldn't be.
It's kind of, it's kind of responsibility.
It shouldn't be private. It should be other government.
Other government.
Yeah, so in, in that case, the only private we have would be.
Is it because they would be grants, oh, I see, that are private grant funding?
It doesn't matter if the grant funding is involved.
Would it be private because of the funding, where it's coming from, instead of other government?
It's not private. It doesn't belong in private.
If, if private people fund the grant, it could be.
So then I, I would be in favor of removing property owners and under the private, just make that a, a box that you color in if you need private things like Historical Society or like property owners or like any other private thing.
So as they get added, we put them, a symbol for them underneath here?
Well, that's a, that's the thing is, either, if it's private groups, just don't even list what the different private groups are. Just leave that with no categorization and just make the checkbox green, or make that block green if you need input from the private sector. Would that be useful or would that just be, I don't know, no information at all? Because right now, the only thing under that private sector is property owners.
Do we need to know that before the questionnaire goes out?
No.
No, we could decide that after, at the, when we see how it all plays out and looks, rather, what we said and what we need.
Okay.
Good thoughts to keep in mind.
And, and down below someplace, we can have just a list that develops over time. Historical Society, Boy Scouts and Athletic Association, whatever. As they come up to participate, we can add them, I suppose. They don't have to all be delineated now.
And it might be more flexible if you.
So basically, when you send this out, not only are you going to cut out, not only are you going to cut out the.
Those last two sections.
The first two columns.
Yep, you got it.
Just.
Yep, that's it.
Don't even worry about the other ones.
And we can add the other ones.
Later.
If we, for instance, if we want to add something in, in the responsibility, we can do it in this exercise.
So then do we want to keep the same priorities and timeframes that are shown here, A, B, C of one, two, three, four, five?
That's what she said because that's what it has to end up being, so we don't want to change it.
I like it.
I think we should just leave it alone and we'll find out when we get them back.
Right, more numbers makes it harder to say.
I got one.
Right.
Might get one back that says they want to.
On the.
Museum, free bar, historical.
And if you have that intern whiz kid, make it so that it's a Dropbox selection so that they, you know, click on and pick the A, B, or C.
Oh, that's an idea. Yeah, Dropbox.
We don't have an internet, but.
We have to. I, I do, that's easy enough to do in Excel.
Yes, it is.
That way it'll, it'll enforce that everybody is putting in consistent information at least, if you have it so that they can only pick from these.
And that would be if you have Excel open. If you don't, it'll open and you'll have to wait.
That's true. If they just print out a paper copy and they don't, well, okay, I suppose that's true.
Or even if you don't open it, because mine will open Excel, it'll open Google and.
Was this sent to you electronically or was it sent, oh, okay.
Okay, so I guess then, I guess then we just have to.
Go on a plain blank.
Because some people only have a pen.
Send it out, fill it in.
Right.
Because this table, these tables are, I'm sure.
I'm not going to say a word.
I would bet they probably are Excel.
Are they?
I would almost bet they're Excel.
Yeah, probably.
Nothing.
I mean, I'm not sure, but it, it wouldn't be that difficult to.
No, but then coming to think of it, that's true. It's not everybody's going to necessarily have Excel. So maybe, may, I guess we just go a plain, flat format and print it out, fill it in by hand.
Where are we at now? I'm lost.
Control, man.
We're done.
No, you're, well, no capital improvement.
We haven't even done the capital improvement.
Was that on the agenda?
Sue, you have more to present. Can you go over?
Um, the only other thing, and it was just mentioned in the minutes, was to get a copy of the vision that you put together.
Oh, yeah.
You can talk about it tonight or just keep it and save it for the next time.
Where though?
It was passing.
The seven we have?
Problem.
Okay.
I expect some creativity.
I'm sorry, that wasn't on the agenda.
I'm going to keep my mouth shut. I don't like it so long.
I heard.
It actually kind of was on the agenda.
Was it?
Updated land use goals and objectives, vision statement.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So there, yeah. Well, I like the last line.
If I can't have it a page and a half, this is for you.
You want, hey, you want to do a research on that?
No, to me, that's just, you know.
All right, so we got capital improvement, right?
It hasn't changed since the last time we did have a village council meeting.
You were going to get us some figures.
I did.
He did once, yep.
Yeah, but you, you were still working on it.
Fifty and seventy, I told you. Told you that last one.
Fifty and seventy what?
Under normal circumstances.
I have my notes in my bag, but I didn't pull them out.
Circumstances, you have fifty thousand dollars available roughly out of the general fund and roughly seventy thousand dollars available on road funds to do various projects each year.
But we can't do anything per se until we get, after November the 13th, right? I mean, we don't even know what's going to be.
The village council for, yeah, village council for, you know, we don't stop, we continue to go on. So what I was going to say is there's a slight change to the CIP you got from the last time. We have submitted a scrap tag grant last year for Davis Alley and Edward Street. That got rejected. So we resubmitting, we're in the process of resubmitting for the next year for a scrap tire grant.
Why'd they get rejected?
Two reasons, number one, they have a, they have a philosophy, we're being told, of they don't wanna give the same community three years in a row, and we have received two years. And then the other piece was, they want to use as much, the purpose behind a scrap tire grant is to use scrap tires. So they wanna take and do more of a length of road, you know, so they can use more tires and stuff.
Right.
Then they do a small project, when you look at Davis Alley, that was, that was a reconstruction, very short, didn't use a lot of tires, and it was seventy thousand dollars. When you look at Edward Street, that was a mill and resurfaced, significantly larger, significantly longer, and you know how much that cost? Seventy thousand dollars. So, I had them do an estimate of mill out to the village limit.
Right.
Church street, up, up the hill, out to the village limit. That came out to be roughly two hundred thousand dollars. So, on a scrap tire grant, we would pay half of that. So we submitted Edward Street, it was agreed by the council to submit Edward Street and Mill Street, you know, two major streets.
East of the town.
East of town, Mill up from church here, up to.
It really needs a lot.
Needs a lot, and.
Up the way.
Up to the village limit.
To the east?
Yep. So.
Just past the hill people, right?
Yep, well, all the way out to the village limit, and that does a couple things, number one, it's, it, I have a personal philosophy that if you do the roads that people come in on, it creates an image for your town. So if the first thing you see is a bumpy road, a crummy road coming into town.
Into the village, yep.
People start thinking it's crummy village, it's, you know, crummy town, whatever, so let's focus them creating a good impression as you're coming into town, so. That, and you get a lot of people on Edward Street, that's a perfect street, cause you just got a boatload of people dropping off kids every day, you know? Yeah. Probably one of the heavier travel streets we've got.
And that's one of the ones, um, I marked as a high priority as well.
Correct, yep. So.
I wish the state had that same philosophy, when I just returned from Germany and on the shuttle bus ride from the airport to the parking lot, I realized, yep, I'm back in Michigan.
But that's, so we're submitting that, there's no guarantee, but it, it, it checks off two of the boxes, A, we didn't get one last year.
Right.
And B, it uses substantially more.
Tires.
Tires and it's a longer length, and it's a major road, and, you know, so hopefully we'll get that, we should hear something about that in the spring, so.
Better drainage, I'm assuming, better drainage.
Well, there is some drainage in, but the, what we're, what we've been doing with the blowing out the socks and stuff like that on the hill has worked, and so as long as we do the proper maintenance on what we're supposed to do. They have those drains underneath the road that they put in, that they go in and snake them out twice a year, uh, you know, burn them out and clean the socks and.
Socks?
Yeah, there's like filter, for lack of a better term, and, and.
I always compare it to the ones you hang on your laundry thing, it's the same, they collect it all and they, and all that.
Are we gonna see any more activity on the school street, or is that, are we still struggling with that?
No, I was arguing with your neighbor yesterday.
Which one?
Your neighbor.
I thought you just got fixed over there.
Hey, we got fixed.
The, the problem I have right now with that, and I explained to him, was the, um, we had a pretty torrential downpour last week, and I went over there and I watched it. And the guy that's two houses north of you, that has like the cobblestone and the driveway that he hasn't put any, like, rocks or anything in it in a long time. And your neighbor didn't believe me, he was talking, but I sat right there, and there was just a boatload of water that comes down that sidewalk, I mean, it's almost like a river. And I was sitting there watching, it's coming from the church down the sidewalk, and as soon as it got to his driveway, it dumped off into his driveway until those puddles filled up, and then it went down to his walkway that he built that's below the sidewalk. And it dumped into his, like, little area, that cobblestone area he put in there, dumped into that. And then it kept going down the sidewalk down to your place, then there's the water that comes off the road, too, down more towards your place. And that was draining pretty good, but it was backing up, they need to relieve that cement a little bit more, I think, around that, that.
The drain, the catch basin.
Catch basin?
Yeah, cause they can't fix nothing without doing that.
Correct.
I mean, that and you got a problem with the sidewalks are collapsing, but lost their elevation due to.
Brooks.
Res, oh, probably not.
They have that much water running across them.
There's things that cause it, but my neighbor's doing so.
Yeah, there's a couple things, if you're draining all your water off your roof onto your yard under the sidewalk, it's gonna eventually wash that out and drop it down, and you can see there's a section there that.
And he don't wanna hear that either.
He don't wanna hear that, I started down that road and learned to walk, better be quiet, that's.
Yeah.
But that's, that, uh, the, the thing about that was, other than that one guy's driveway in the cobblestone area, I went, I went there, it was dead raining, and there was water building on it. I went there a half hour later, and everything was dry, except for this driveway.
If that concrete was cut down at the catch basin, and I wouldn't get the little lake in front of mine, that would pretty much be gone, cause it, it holds a lake, almost the length of my property.
Right.
And it's the only reason, cause it has no place to go.
Yeah.
And cause they elevated all of that.
The worst place right now is the corner of Cedar and Ball.
Yeah, I know it.
I don't know what they're gonna do there without doing some major tear out of it.
I think the worst place now, has been for a long time, is along Granger Road, because every single time we get rain, a whole bunch of the soil on the sides of the road washed down to Curzley Creek from both directions. And it washes out, and, and the, uh, M dot, they have not been able to figure out how to fix that, they keep trying every once in a while, but they can't do it.
Well, they've got a project that they've got slated for two thousand and twenty.
Are you talking, Rick, right at the intersections of?
You're talking down near.
Down culvert, right? From both directions.
Kent and Granger.
Kent, it takes soil from Kent Road all the way down to Curzley Creek there. No, I mean, from, from east to west, and it takes soil from just east of Edward Street and takes it, you know, just washes it out. Down to the creek, both directions, every single time we get rain, and it just, it's never ending.
So you're talking about like the shoulder of the road type soil, or what?
You know, there's a pavement, and then there's grass, and there's no shoulder exactly, and, uh, the grassy areas get washed out every single time we have a rain, including today. And it takes soil every rain and deposits it down at the creek, you know? And you know what contributes to it, is the postal delivery drivers, who drive along on the south side of Granger Road, who drive from mailbox to mailbox on the grass. So the grass doesn't exist there in a lot of places, and so that just.
Creates a barrier that allows it to.
Gets, gets washed away everything, every time we ever rain. That's a real problem.
That's in the township?
It's on both sides.
I think the south side is township.
The south side is township.
And the other thing, that intersection, the township, or Oakland County, you know how every gravel road, like if you take, go out Oakwood Road, they pave like an eighth of a mile? Like, it's the same thing, Kent, all that comes, all that rain comes out, Kent Road Hill, and washes out that bottom area, those, that pavement should extend, you know, eighth of a mile past the intersection, it's both ways. On Granger there, would alleviate a lot of the issues, but.
Could be, well, and curbing could be. Curbing could help along that stretch where Rick's talking about, maybe, but, then again, you're talking about curbing, and then you'd have to have that funnel to certain collection points that then could drain down in the ditch and, and in a way that it doesn't.
Talking about the drain commissions two thousand and twenties, talking about replacing that entire culvert down there, your Kent Road under Granger, it's like a million dollar project, and they came to the township and asked both, saying you might owe two hundred thousand apiece, and we said, no, no, no. You don't do that to the rich boys, you ain't gonna do it to us, so.
You talked about the culvert where Curzley Creek.
No, I'm saying if we pave that down, right now, all that runs down, and it just throws all that dirt and stuff right out, and it rains, and it goes down to the creek. If they pave that and ditch it, so now, the water comes down the hill, hits the ditches, and stops that movement of water, I mean. It's horrible, I, I was driving through the other day.
Build it up like they have on these.
Cause I lose, I lost my wheels or something.
Anyway, that's everyone.
I'm all done.
Need some attention.
Okay.
I'm all done. Did you make this math?
So there's capital.
Did you plan update? Use an old math.
We did that, and then we did discussion items, is there any others?
Oh, we did discussion items?
That's, wasn't that what we were just doing?
I thought, I thought we were. Or they did? I thought we were still.
Are we gonna?
Okay, maybe it is.
You ready?
To do what?
Is he, are you done, Rick?
The mask can drill something at the moment.
You can do that after we get done with it.
Is this a discussion item?
Is it a discuss, yeah?
No, no, it's not.
Alright, so, we're done with capital improvement, any discussion items, Rick?
Not me, I already brought mine up.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Me.
Put it right, put it right.
Never mind, it's good.
Okay, what'd you have, Rick?
Okay, so.
We can stay later, something.